For tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to city council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. Light system, it's three minutes. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear. After three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Matters that are germane to council mean matters that the city law, city council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, organization, to include campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. Please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Reverend Clark, the Sire Royal, with Hilton Presbyterian Church, will provide invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Vic will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of council to stand for the invocation and pledge. Those who also wish to stand are welcome but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Holy God, we thank you. We thank you for our city. We thank you for our homes, for our places of work, for our waterways and parks, for our schools, for the teachings of our varied and cumulative histories, for all the things we do exceptionally well, and for our dreams. From East End to Lee Hall and all points between, downtown, Reed, Marshall, Huntington, Haddonwood, Sedgfield, Deep Creek, Denby, all of them, Lord, we praise you for every neighborhood. We praise you for partnerships and friendships, for every wonder and every child. We give you thanks. Thank you for your call, to love you by loving one another. We confess we curve in upon ourselves too often and for days and seasons too long. Forgive us when we fail to be patient. Forgive us when we fail to model decency and orderliness. Forgive us when we turn away from you. Merciful God, we would care for your earth. We would bless all your children. Help us to trust in you, our peace, our light, and our joy. You bless us with many gifts. We ask for your blessing upon this council, for every member, for their staff, and for the work they bring together. Guide their steps, give them interest and concern for everyone, especially for those in need, for those who are poor, for those who work hard in their jobs but even so are hard pressed to make their rent each month. God, we pray, give our city council courage and heart to do what is good and just. Help them through the complexities of their duties, stir up in them a readiness and zeal for all our city can be, and help us, dear Lord, their constituency, to show our respect and trust as they commit themselves to this call. Bless them in their work this evening, and bless our city. We offer this prayer. May all God's people say, amen.
Amen. Can you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Woodbury from this meeting?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Vice Mayor, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
And Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Public hearings, page four. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance releasing and vacating an existing detention pawn easement across property located at 474 Reddick Road. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page nine. Item E2 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a deed of easement by and between the City of Newport News, Virginia, and Virginia Electric and Power Company, doing business as Dominion Energy Virginia, granting a utility easement over city-owned property located at 13200 and 13210 Warwick Springs Road to facilitate installation of underground electrical service improvement. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Consent agenda. Item F contains the following item. Page twenty, minutes of the work session of September 12th, 2023. Page thirty-four, minutes of the regular meeting, September 12th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Items F1 and F2, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page fifty-two. Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution approving a capital improvements plan for fiscal year 2024 through 2028 for the City of Newport News, Virginia. And I would just like to take a moment to thank Lisa Soprano, Corey Cloud, our entire CIP budget team for their hard work. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page seventy-one. Item G2, Mr. Manager.
Item G2 is a request to approve a resolution granting local approval for hospital-to-home LLC doing business as H2H Emergency Services, a private emergency medical services agency to provide certain medical transport services within the City of Newport News. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Is it moved and seconded? Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page seventy-five. Item G3, Mr. Manager.
Item G3 is item one of two. It is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement by and between the Commonwealth of Virginia and the City of Newport News, Virginia, for a Virginia Military Community Infrastructure Grant for the Harwoods Mill Dam Improvement Project. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page ninety-one. Item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G4 is the companion item for item G3. It is a request to approve a resolution of appropriation of $1,225,781 in Commonwealth of Virginia grant funds for the Harwoods Mill Dam Improvement Project. I recommend approval of the resolution.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page ninety-four. Item G5, Mr. Manager.
Item G5 is a request for city council to designate by motion the city's voting delegates and one alternate delegate for the Virginia Municipal League Business Meeting.
All right, I make a motion to designate Councilwoman Vic and Councilwoman Woodbury as the city's voting delegates, and Ms. Jerry Wilson as alternate at the BML Conference Business Meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Page ninety-eight. Appropriations. Item H, Mr. Manager.
Item H consists of five appropriations this evening. The first appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $50 million from the public buildings category of the fiscal year 2023 bond authorization and $21 million in state school construction assistance program grant funds in support of the design and construction of Huntington Middle School, which is the first phase of the Southeast Community Resource Area Project. The total appropriation is $71 million. The second appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $427,410 awarded to the city from the Virginia Port Authority aid to local ports grants program for improvements to the Minchville Marina. The third appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million from the fiscal year 2023 bond authorization, community development category, in support of maritime economic development projects. The fourth appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating grant funds in the amount of $760,000 for the city's gun violence prevention violent crime reduction initiative. And the fifth appropriation is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $15,985,681 of fiscal year 2023 Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Grant Program Funds for the Worcester Point Road Improvements Project from Jefferson Avenue to Operations Drive. I recommend approval of all appropriations.
Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve items H1 through H5, all inclusive?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vic?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to the business of city council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me. Clarence Whitley?
My name is Ed Whitley. I live at 403 Minchville Road South, Newport News, Virginia, and I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Warwick County Confederate Monument. I have been here several times. I've given it some more off, but I'm back, will be back, asking that the monument be re-erected. Earlier this year, our fine mayor called for this city to be diverse. In many ways, we are, but when we took that monument down, we were not diverse. Those soldiers were fought for our Commonwealth, the county of Warwick, and for the citizens of our fair state. They didn't go to war over slavery like everybody says. They went to war because this Commonwealth asked them to protect Virginia when the aggressors of the North marched across our state line, our Commonwealth line, and into Manassas. I'm asking that we honor those men because they did no more than what our fine mayor did, what I did, and anybody else that served the United States of America in uniform. They went and answered the call of the Commonwealth. Now, I've asked that the monument could be put up, or recommended the monument could be put up, at Lee Hall, Inview, at the Warwick Museum. The Warwick Museum would be the best place on public property, but I also would like to ask, would the city give the monument and re-erect the monument on private property if such property became available? It would then be maintained by the people that had that private property, and it would not, under no way, become part of the city for any way to take care of it. An organization would be made to protect that monument, maintain that monument, and make the area a fine outstanding place for the city. I'm asking that this council do what the last councils should not have done. Mr. Harris, you marched to take the monument down. That monument did nothing to you. There was never any marchers or anything around that monument against the people of the city of Newport News in any which way or form. The only thing they did was place flowers and wreaths around that monument. That battle flag that's on there had nothing to do with the Klan or anybody else. It was strictly put on there because that was the rally point for the Confederate soldiers at the time of battle. They died, and now it's the rally point for the souls to come home. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Thomas Holland.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm not good at this, so forgive me. Name's Thomas Holland. 59198 Orchid is my address. Just a little bit about myself. I've seen about you, sir. I see you've served. You're a soldier, youngest vice mayor ever, youngest elected black official, breaking ceilings everywhere. Thank you for your time. Okay, a little bit about myself. I was born in Georgia, dropped on the floor of a women's correctional facility, taken to Grady Memorial Hospital. I know you've studied in Atlanta. You probably know Grady. Kicked around from foster home to foster home until eighteen, joined the Army, met my beautiful wife Angie, and service in Germany. Twenty September, or twenty December, obviously September 11th, the next year rolled around, and life changed for everybody. The next four years of our six-year marriage, my wife was deployed, or I was deployed. Planned our life out, you know, moved to Georgia, finished up our military career, moved up here to Virginia, lived in Williamsburg, moved down here, started at the shipyard. Finally have a chance to own a home, get my stuff together. Forty years old. Purchased the house at Orchid, have it built custom, only house I probably ever have. Thankful for it. Go to a team building retreat for the yard, come back, next day, wife says, we need to talk about something. Anybody that's ever heard that knows it's never a good conversation. So I knew something was wrong. She pulled up our mortgage. It went from fifteen hundred a month to twenty-six hundred a month. I'm at a loss. I need help. I contacted the VA, who I got the loan through. I just, I don't understand what happened. Like, within a year, my house was valued at an extra hundred and eighteen thousand? Like, I don't know what's going on, but I feel like I'm losing everything I worked for. I mean, if a hundred to two hundred dollars can get people out of their rent, or their housing, how can I come up with that much money? It's, something's wrong. I'm a union member. My next five years, I get a three dollar raise. That's gonna do nothing to keep me in my home. What happened? How did my stuff go up that much? Can somebody help me? I contacted the loan people. I've got pay stubs. They told me to come talk to y'all. I don't know what to do. By this time next year, I won't have a home. What do I do?
So I'll jump in here, and then I'll turn it over to the manager. I'll come talk to you afterwards and see what we can do from the veteran affairs perspective. We have a lot of people in this room that care about people that live in Newport News. I will come talk to you afterwards. I don't want to say anything, or we can...
Yeah, I'll join you, Speaker, in that conversation.
All right. Just stay right there. We'll come talk to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Ms. Angela Harris?
I'm almost in tears with him. Like, I'm fifty-one, born and raised here in Newport News, Virginia. It's hard to even take my notes and see why Woodbury is not here, so I'll wait and keep my comments, so the next time she's here with the whole agenda from H to G. A lot of stuff up in there. I hope that the health assessment was done. My name is Angela Harris, and I'm born and raised in Newport News, and I'm here tonight because of a lot of paper pushing, and like, it's a lot. Our whole city has changed from the top to the bottom. We have three cities running under one umbrella, and I'm just not understanding, even with the brother talking about the Confederate monument and the history of our ancestors, all our ancestors, as it relates to where we are in Newport News, Warwick County, Denby, you know, these shires, this city, this incorporation. So I'm here tonight to talk about the historical East End Toxic Tour, a tribute to my ancestors. Mary T. Christian, Dr. Mary T. Christian, June Mears, Brother Tyree, Hugh Harold and his brothers, Mr. Huntley, Joe Frank, our former mayor, before the mayor we just had, Tap Daddy, you already know who that is, but our living elders, Lenwood De Bru, O. H. Smith, ninety years of service in our community, Jimmy Summers, just those names in general as we move forward with all this money that we giving, and we could have used some of that money to save the existing Huntington High School that is there already. So I got a problem with that, and that's for school. But as we talk about this Toxic Tour, there is a lot of toxic, but I chose six, six, as we go into our next conversation with the city or the incorporation of Newport News right here at the Jesse Ratlin Shrine on Washington Avenue. So our first site is the Chase Bag Company, which is a brown field that's owned by the City of Newport News. When we first started looking, our ancestors looking at this environmental justice, the first ones that took a look at it in eighteen eighty was the Chase Bag Company, Old Dominion Land Company, and the Newport News Shipyard and Dry Dock Company, which we know now to be what it is now, leased out for ninety years and never to be known as the original Newport News Shipyard and Dry Dock Company that existed right here before College Pete Huntington came here from West Virginia and bore his coal. Our second site is the Hampton Road Sanitation Department, because we don't ever want to forget that we tested that water, and we had leaks in our water, and we need to do a better cleanup. And we also want to talk about the King Will Reservoir as it relates to our ancestors and why we pushing this paper. I already had the conversation with Glenn Oldham. He was the representative during that time, Fort Monroe. Our third site is DTA, our coal company, and we don't ever want to forget that Kendall Morgan is over there as well. We have those conversations, and we have a wonderful relationship with our people that do business in Newport News.
Ma'am, I'm let you finish. We have about thirty seconds, ma'am.
Oh, thirty seconds.
Yes, ma'am.
Our fourth site is the shipyard, because we don't ever want to forget our ancestors that died as they just pushed the commercials on TV as they died from that asbestos. The union need to have a conversation with us. Our fifth site is the interstate highway system. The first exit as you come in Newport News is Chestnut Avenue, and we don't want to ever forget about the historical East End. There will be no Hilton without the East End. Don't ever forget. Our last site is the CNO Railroad. We want to remind everyone again that College Pe... We want to remind everyone again that College Peak Huntington bore his coal here from West Virginia, and the railroad is at the War Memorial. So we can have those conversations as we salute all our ancestors all over, from the top to the bottom. But we don't ever, ever want to forget our ancestors as we push this paper.
Thank you, ma'am. Della Robbins?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Della Robbins. My address is one four two zero nine Pender Flane, Newport News, Virginia. I am a citizen of Warrick Lawn. And before you all, during the time when you were working on the renovation, the redevelopment of getting rid of the ditches and installing the sidewalks, I was in front of you. I advocated for the citizens in Warrick Lawn, and I would like to say thank you because that did happen. The sidewalks look good, definitely the ditches looks good. It makes the neighborhood look so much better. The kids are riding their bikes and people are walking the sidewalks. So again, thank you so much. But I'm in front of you tonight because the Man May Creek slash swamp, that's the name we have given the creek that is now on Camber Road. It's not being upkept. The grass need cutting, you know, we have to get in contact with someone to come and cut the grass. It can get as far as three to four inches tall before someone comes out to cut it. I would like to thank Vice Mayor. I called that to his attention, and he was on top of it, just like that. He met me, we walked around, we looked at the swamp, and he knew right then and there that something had to be done. We've been told that we are on a regular schedule for it to be cut so we can stop calling for it to be cut. But in the meantime, someone came out, city or sanitary or sanitation, whomever, and they cut around the swamp. And I continue saying swamp because that's what it looks like, okay? But they did not cut the deep side of the swamp, they just cut around it. So the grass is still in the swamp itself. The water stands there, and we were also told the reason why the water is standing is because the pipe that was installed is too high for the water to filter or run through. So something definite has to be done with that. We are proposing that the grass is cut on a regular basis so we can stop calling. We would like to see it more beautified. You know, we don't want no benches or anything out there because we don't want the wrong people coming out there, sitting around and trying to sell drugs and et cetera. But we would like to see maybe just some large rocks, you know, put just when you pass that swamp so we can start calling it a creek instead of the swamp. So it can just make Camber Road look pretty. Again, we thank you, and I thank you again for the sidewalks, and we looking forward to see that this will happen. If not, we will stay in front of you as well, just like we did with the sidewalk and the ditches. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, and I forgot, we have two citizens here as well tonight that's also advocating for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was about to, quickly, just because I see you all are also slated to speak. But Mr. James and I spoke in regards to this, so if we could get some kind of update, as soon as this can get taken care of, that'd be awesome. This week, hopefully. But please, if you could let me know if there's anything that we need to do. My assumption was that it was going to be taken care of, so... If someone can get back to me, that'd be awesome, please.
Yes, Vice Mayor, I will work with the city administration, and I'll provide an update to you and share that with the council members as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. James Stamp?
Protocol that always been established. My name is James Stamps, and my address is four thousand one Camber Road. I'm also living in Warrick Lawn. And I live beside that supposed to be retention pond, like Ms. Robinson said, it's a swamp. And muskies are terrible, and I've talked to everybody. I talked to the Public Works engineers about this problem. I think I spoke to, from Curtis, about also, it's terrible. It's really, I saw. When you come in Warrick Lawn, you got departments right there. I'm the first house that you see, and that swamp is right beside my house. People are walking down the street that came to my house and asked me, have I talked to the city officials about, I got to call it a swamp because it's trash there, like Ms. Robinson said, the pipes are too high, it doesn't drain, you got vegetation everywhere. And I can go in my backyard of my house, and muskies will still bite me. So I'd just like to say, I know you can't give me no certain date, but please put me on the schedule as soon as possible to solve this problem. And since Ms. Robinson spoke a lot about what's going on, and I'm the first one that you see when you come into Warrick, Camber Road, once you pass apartments. So I hope this can be done as quick as possible. Okay, thank you.
Take a look at it, thank you, sir. Mr. Julius Green?
To the Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, ladies and gentlemen. I'm also a resident of Warrick Lawn. I live at twenty-five Crispfield Drive, and I want to thank the city for what you've done with the road and the sidewalk. Only it took ten years, but we got it done. The next thing is the pond. I pass by it daily. It's not kept, in fact, my experience, it would never finish because if it was, we wouldn't have the problem we have now. All they had to do is lower the pipe or put some sand to bring it up. And that's not a whole lot to have to do to get it right. But right now, I live at twenty-five, and mosquitoes are already over there. That's a freezing ground for mosquitoes. And I know the city can do better than that because I've been here since nineteen sixty-four, and I know the city have done a good job. But when they did the street, they created the retention pond. And now we trying to live with it. But whoever the engineer was, he did never finish it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yodajen Uwa? Apologies, I messed up your name.
It's Yodajen Uwa. My name is Yodajen Uwa, and I live in Newport News. I thank those who spoke before me that gives me the courage to speak for myself. I'm here tonight because they are new judges in the juvenile courts, and they may not have, and I know that they don't have backgrounds on certain cases. And judges with no background on certain cases can't make... They can't make fair...
Informed decision.
Yes, thank you.
No problem, I got you.
Thank you. And that kind of take away due process. In my case, especially due to a lawsuit being filed in Newport News against the Newport News Department of Human Services falsifying documents to keep four of my children from me, along with Judge Timothy Fisher using a racially biased criteria to deny my children into my care. And two years later, removal of a newborn, fraudulently obtaining a birth certificate, a false-to-fire arrest with no warrant due to a suit, a notice of retaliation, January thirty-first, twenty twenty. Came to this building, and I put City Attorney Christopher Midgley on notice of a suit, and two hours later, he came to my door, and they took my newborn who was breastfeeding from me. Ended up having to go through levels of courts and on the state level and the federal level. The case was threw out for technicalities, not because it didn't have any merit in court, but because technicality, something didn't get turned in on time over a five-year period of time of fighting. I went to court yesterday, and the judge didn't give me the opportunity to say what I just said to you all and that made conflict in his decision that he made in me getting one of my children back into my care. Four have been returned, but it's still a fifth one. He also stated to me, I'm sure you want all your children in your care. Not only is it morally right, but it's also justice. Justice needs to be served, justice hasn't been served. I want some kind of justice served. If anybody could step in, if anyone, I am going to file an appeal. But I need the city to know what's going on. I've got quiet for about two years or three years, and I was protesting out front. I did a lot of fighting. And I've been quiet, but I have to put my uniform back on and start fighting again. And some here already are aware of it. I spoke with someone here already about the issue, and I was told four years ago by a social worker, why does she come to the city hall to tell her issues and have her to not come to the city hall anymore? And I was also banned from the Newport News Social Service Building for coming here and speaking. Thank you for allowing me to share. If you want to reach out to me, my email is cheatribe8@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is new business. City Manager?
No new business to report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City Attorney?
Just the one resolution that I passed out. Yeah, I'm sorry. Before me for new business is a resolution of the Council of the City of Newport News, Virginia, confirming, ratifying, and terminating the declaration of a local emergency issued by the Newport News Director of Emergency Management on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, made necessary by tropical storm Ophelia.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. City Clerk? Councilman Vick?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ely?
I would like to say hello to our school board chair, Lisa. Sir's long, thank you for all you do with the school system, and just say thank you for everything you do. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harris?
I just want to thank everybody who came out on tonight and everybody who is watching online and continue to share your feedback and let us know what you are going through in the city. We're going to do our best to accommodate what we can and move forward in a manner that's going to be serving all of our citizens. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
I echo the same sentiment to Councilman Harris. I have no other comment.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, first off, I say thank you so much, everyone, for coming out, sharing your concerns and reiterating, you know, that we ultimately work for all the citizens. So thank you so much again for coming out. I do want to give two shouts. The first one, Denby Day was a huge success. So to all the city staff, the Denby Lions Club, everyone who had a hand in putting on this successful event, I just say thank you. And the community appreciates you tenfold. And then, in the same breath of Denby Day, want to say thank you to the All the Way Up Jeepers. That is the name of the Jeeps that members of council had. And they didn't have to do it, but we truly appreciate them looking out for us. So shout out to All the Way Up Jeepers. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. I'll try to be succinct and concise, but just first of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Manager and in your role as Director of Emergency Management. I know we had our sort of first tropical storm, and we were able to really take care of our unhoused populations. We appreciate what you did over that weekend. When I look at everyone who came out and shared tonight, it really reminds me that local government is where, you know, that rubber meets the road. It's where individuals come and their voice is heard, and we do the best to help our citizens in the city. And so I'll come talk to you, sir, but this is where government actually happens. And so that being said, I know we entered, early voting started last Friday. I would encourage everyone to come out to our sixth floor here at City Hall. And I think City Center is going to be open in a week or so. It might already be open, but, it's already open? Perfect, it's already open. But I would encourage all citizens, make your voice heard because local, state, that's really where these things get done. And with that being said, we stand adjourned. Thank you.